Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Daly City Planning Commission Meeting of May 7, 2019. I'd like to open the meeting with the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. May we have the roll call, please? Crump?
Present.
Pacheco?
Here.
Sotory's absent. Pro Anu? Here. Thank you. Now, we have the minutes, the minutes of February 5. Actually, do we?
Correction.
You have a correction?
No, I don't.
You don't have a correction?
I am moved that they be approved as written.
Okay. I have a second on this side? A second to approve? All in favor?
Second.
Aye.
Okay. Aye, it is. So, we have accepted the minutes of February 5. And now, can we move towards the public hearing? Very good. So, we're on the first, which is the use permit, UPR 31913936, and design review, DR 41813424, for the expansion of an existing two-story medical office building property, Zone PD 63, which is Plan Development 63. The office expansion is permissible by the Daly City zoning ordinance, Section 17.28.020, which allows uses proposed in a planned development district which are dissimilar to the general category of uses allowed by the planned development zone upon first securing a use permit. Michael?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the planning commission. The request before you is a use permit and design review proposal by NEMS, which is the expansion of an existing two-story medical office building at 211 Eastmore Avenue. The site is located at the northeast corner of Zeta Manor in Eastmore Avenue. The present zoning is PD 63. The site was rezoned some time ago to allow for a mixed-use type of a development in the early 2000s. In 2009, the NEMS facility was approved by the planning commission and city council and has occupied the site since that time. And now, the facility is proposed for expansion. The proposal would essentially take an existing 10,700-square-foot office building and add to it approximately 6,000 square feet of additional office space. The office would, the office space would replace an existing one-story, 1,200-square-foot laboratory space, as well as some existing parking spaces on the ground level. The resulting building, again, would be approximately 16,562 square feet in total. This is a site view from, of the existing NEMS facility, looking northwest from Eastmore Avenue. This is the entrance to the project, which is the primary entrance in and out of the parking lot, which is in this area. And the proposed addition would be in this area. And this is the laboratory that would be removed and then replaced by the two-story expansion. There's an existing entrance on Zeta Manor that is actually currently chainlocked. It's not used. It's essentially an emergency access only. So, there's not any regular access to the parking lot at this location. So, this is the backside of the building, so existing north elevation. We have a couple of pictures of adjacent land uses, and this is the intersection of Eastmore Avenue and Zeta Manor. There are townhouses in this area, as well as single-family homes on Zeta Manor. We purposely provided a photo of the intersection in previous hearings, and issues come up with whether there should be a signalized intersection. Even in this proposal, the city did have a traffic analysis performed, and the opinion of the professional engineering firm that took a look at that determined that, based on Caltrans standards, that there was no warrant for adding any additional stop bars to stop traffic on Eastmore Avenue. Of course, there are stop bars that exist on Zeta Manor and the opposing street, but there was no warrant to add those to stop traffic on west or eastbound Eastmore. Also, of course, no warrant for a signal. So, this is the proposed site plan. Again, this is that main project entrance off Eastmore, and this is the existing building shape here. As a matter of fact, let's just zoom in on that, the existing office building in the orange, and the proposal would add a two-story addition in the green outlined area. Backing up a little, the project parking lot would essentially be in this area. As indicated in the staff report, the proposed expansion, based on this number of square feet, meets the prescribed zoning ordinance standard. We have a slide on parking that we will go over also. This is the proposed first-floor plan. The gray areas are existing, white areas are proposed. Essentially, the expansion would add office space for the NEMS facility, some laboratory space, things like this. This is the second floor, a proposed expansion. Clinical space, exam rooms. These are the proposed east and south elevations and the north and west elevations. Staff was largely supportive of the proposed architecture and essentially just carries over the existing architecture. We did have some recommended conditions of approval that we thought might actually enhance the project, which is essentially the installation of a metal awning between the first and second floors, along the building southwest corner, and traversing the east and north elevation widths. So, that's just trying to give some, just additional visual interest to the building in the neighborhood, or toward the neighborhood facing to the north, the Zeta Manor neighborhood. Awning would be constructed from galvanized metal to prevent rust, and we also wanted some trowelists with growies in between windows, things like this, just to try and provide some additional visual interest along the building walls. In considering the use permit before, the planning commission needs to determine that the proposed land use would be compatible with existing uses. That's somewhat an easy evaluation. There's a medical office already there. The city's received no significant evidence that there's any kind of incompatibility. The two uses seem to work well together. The use has actually been an office building prior, and insurance agents, prior to the early 2000s, insurance agency occupied the site for quite a while. So, this is a medical office use, seemingly compatible with the residential neighborhood. The Public Works Department has determined that infrastructure exists to serve the site. Parking and circulation is always something that we take a closer look at, and we have a whole slide on it. The zoning ordinance requires 55 parking spaces for the proposed use. There's the math on the top bullet point, 55 spaces are proposed. There are some spaces that have some substandard aisle widths, but those spaces already exist today, and the proposal would not exacerbate the use of those spaces, so it wouldn't change that in any way. They seem to be working on the site, and so we're fine with continuing to accept those as city-accepted parking spaces. And that's essentially what the last two bullets say. The project's exempt from CEQA, minor alteration to existing private structure. We are recommending that the planning commission take the following actions in approving the project, the use permit and the design review.
I thought we'd gotten a promotion.
Oh, don't scare me.
If there's any questions, we're happy to answer those. The applicants, of course, here. Dan Boyle from MCG Architecture is the main person that's been working on this on behalf of NEMS, and that's the person that we've, the staff's been heavily communicating with.
Michael, if I may, I have one quick question for you. You said currently, the gate going out to Zeta Manor itself is strictly for emergency purposes. Would it remain that way?
It would.
Okay. So, the main in and out of the parking lot would be on?
Is on Eastmore, yes.
Okay.
That was one of my questions.
See how smart I am?
You are. I think we'll keep you. I had a question, please, Michael. In that location, I'm familiar with Eastmore Avenue, but I'm trying to picture, are there, are there any meters in that area? I mean, I can see a concern of the public that might say, well, I don't, since it's so close to residential, will it be spilling out into their neighborhoods?
No, there's no regulation as terms of time-limited parking or any kind of meter.
Like, two hours in that certain section?
No.
Or anything that would, somebody say, well, I want to be there longer, so I'm going to park this way. So, there's plenty of parking.
The proposal meets the zoning ordinance, yes. And in fact, as part of the traffic evaluation that was performed, the conclusion of that study determined that there were actually fewer parking spaces required, the peak demand was actually something like 44 or 45 parking spaces, and this provides more than that.
And what about employee parking? So, you have the employees, and then you need to have enough parking for people who come and use the facility?
So, those, the employee parking is rolled into the parking requirement factor. And if you have questions of NEMS, they can perhaps answer where they direct their employees to park on the lot.
Okay. Okay. Do you have any other questions?
No. You asked.
I asked your questions. We're doing good. We're psychic here today. Okay, so, we do have some speaker cards, and I think I'm going to take it from the bottom, because they were the first people. So, I'd like to invite Ray Driscoll from 35 Zeta Manor to come up. Welcome, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to talk about the stop sign. Can you hear me clear?
Yeah, just a little.
Okay. I'd like to talk.
Talk about the stop sign. If you've ever driven on Zeta Manor, especially in the morning, when the elementary school and the high school is going, it's basically jammed. So, for two reasons, the volume, especially in the morning and in the afternoon, when the parents are picking up their children, that's one reason I think we do need a stop sign. The other reason is because the part of Eastmore to the right, it was on the earlier photo, it bends, and so, when you're, when you're leaving Zeta Manor to make a left turn, you have to creep, yeah, right there.
Okay.
With the exception of Tuesday mornings, which is when street sweeping is going on, you have to creep out and you, to, to, for the traffic going westbound to see you. And because oftentimes cars are going, exceeding the speed limit, they're sincerely surprised that we're coming out of there. So, that's the second reason why we need the stop sign. I am curious what, what standards and what numerics the people who did the analysis were using, and how those numerics compare against the stop sign that was recently put on St. Francis, just above the shopping center there.
Mm-hmm.
So, let's see, is there anything else? That's basically the stop sign I have to.
May I ask you, can I, well, can I?
Sure.
Can I ask him? I know, no, 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 there's rules and stuff.
You're the boss.
Yeah, I know. So, my question is, was this stop sign a concern for you before this project became? So, it's always been a problem?
Yes.
So, okay, that's what I wanted to ask. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Michael, may I ask you a question?
Yes.
Okay. So, I'm, I'm familiar with the schools and the high schools, and I'm familiar with the time that he's discussing. When the analogy, or when the work was done, when you had the person come out and check, do you have the times that he checked, he or she checked?
Yes, so, the hours of, that they considered the peak hours were between 7:15 a.m. and 8:15 a.m., and between 5:00 p.m. and 6:00 p.m.
Okay, so, that's the problem.
Yes.
Okay, so, I'm hearing that the problem is probably viewed at the 8:15, 7:15 time, but the concern is the 2:30, 3 o'clock time, I would assume.
If, if that's when schools let it.
Okay. So, might, can I make a recommendation? Because it sounds like it's an issue before this project came up. Could, could we recommend, besides this project, can we recommend that area be looked at with regards to a stop sign or? Because if you're coming down that hill, and you can come in at a cliff, which we're all familiar with, if you have a stop and then a stop, it'll keep people, if you got to stop, you've got to stop, so you're not flying down the hill. So, I'm understanding what he's saying. But I don't think it really belongs to this project as much as it does.
Sure. It's a, it's an existing issue.
Exactly.
And this isn't the first time that we've heard about the issue.
Okay.
Staff's familiar with it.
Okay.
You know, when we processed the project some years ago for the mixed-use development, the same issue was brought up, and the same, you know, analysis was essentially performed. But to answer your question, yes, there is a process for evaluating existing conditions and the way to address them. The city has a traffic safety committee that does this work.
Okay.
And any residents able to petition that body to look at the issue.
And, and so, could you, Michael, let the gentleman here know, Mr. Driscoll, which department he should be contacting?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. That would help. Michael, there's a gentleman waving, and I know he's, I don't know if he's on my cards or not.
I'm not on the card, but I'm the architect.
Okay, we'll talk.
I was going to add some information to the.
Awesome. So, we'll talk after I ask everybody out. Awesome, good. Okay, Mr. Driscoll, Michael will help you with, with department you need to speak to with regards to that space, that, those stop signs that we're talking about?
And that's the traffic safety committee?
Okay. Thank you. Very good. Okay, I'd like to call up Augustus Tagaro, 43 Zeta Manor. Sir, welcome.
Thank you, commissioners. I also have, may I second raise concerns?
Okay.
I also have questions about the short-term impact of construction in our, on our streets in our neighborhood.
Okay.
I'd like to know how long construction will last, and if preventive measures, as far as dust, noise, are talked about and planned.
Very good. That is a great question. Michael, are we going to, pardon me. Go ahead.
So, with regard to, like, construction?
Yes.
Sure. The city's Public Works Department and the building, the city's Building Division have standards that are imposed upon, as just a routine measure, watering down sites, making sure that dust doesn't create an airborne breathing hazard for adjacent uses.
Very good. And it's my understanding that there's a certain time, right? So, the build, what is the time span within the day?
Sure. The time span, I believe, is between 8:00 and 7:00 for construction, 8:00 and 5:00 for construction.
Eight to five. So, at least.
We always used to put a rider on things.
Go ahead.
We used to call it the Kelly Amendment, because Denise always brought it up.
Used to do it?
But it was, the construction had to be, the construction had to be between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m., which is kind of a standard thing in there, and that's, that's a convenience to the neighborhood, too.
I like that. Very good. Can we do that?
It's a standard condition the city issues.
Okay. So, it's pretty much standard?
Yes, it is.
So, we're agreeing. Very good. Does that help you?
It does, yeah.
Very good.
I also have a second question about long-term impact. We mentioned, we talked about parking. I guess we need to address the, you know, employee parking and also client parking.
Yes.
You know, we definitely want to make sure that, you know, it's provided, you know, for the clients and also for the employees. And I'm glad that somebody asked about the emergency gate, that it will remain as an emergency.
Yes.
And just want to make sure that, you know, it's on the table and, you know, it's being addressed as we discover more information.
Very good.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And our last person I'd like to call up is Nubia, is that Rios? Are you okay? Did we answer all your questions?
No. They already.
They already took care of it. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Okay, so.
I'm excited to hear from the architect.
Yes.
Except the additional.
Yes, sir. Michael, pardon me, I'm so sorry to interrupt you. Can we let the architect speak now? Is that an appropriate time?
Sure.
Awesome. Thank you. Of course. Thank you. If you'd like to introduce yourself, sir?
Thank you very much. My name is Young Wong with MCG Architecture. I just want to let you know that we've been working with the city for over a year and a half. And to answer some of the questions that some of the residents have stated, we actually worked with Shirley Chan of your department in regards to how to do this traffic study and what are the requirements for this traffic study. And in the report, it says that it was based on the analysis set forth by Daly City and Caltrans standards to put this whole report together. And the peak hours were, were between your department, planning, and with our Abrams, who is a well-known traffic study person. And I just want to put that out there, that we actually partnered with the city over a long period of time to go through each issue, because NEMS wants to make sure it's a betterment for the community as far as servicing the need of the community. And I just want to put that out there.
Very good. Thank you. Do you have any questions? Do you have any questions?
No.
No? So, I think we touched on all our, our concerns with regard, especially with regards to what time this project's going to happen. The only thing I didn't hear was, do we expect this, how long do we expect the project, how many months to last?
Usually, in construction for this size of a building? I would imagine it would be about nine months.
Nine months.
Nine months, yeah. Sounds very similar.
And everything, just for the, for everyone here, there is what they call the BMPs, the best management practices for a site, and how water is, and how air quality around the site is. And contractors that NEMS will hire all have to follow that, because it's all under state law and city law. And I've done many projects with NEMS, and they're very careful, because this is a facility, and they're worried about dust and noise, too, for their people.
Thank you so much. Thank you for answering that question. Okay, so, I believe that's everything. So, I'd like to.
Can I make a motion to close the public hearing?
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, the public comments are closed now, and we should vote about?
Number three.
Number three. Thank you. Recommend, we, so, we need to vote on, he recommends that the planning commission forward to the city council the following recommendation. Adopt the findings as outlined herein, and we need to have a motion on that?
Your turn.
Your turn.
What?
Want to set up a motion?
Yes.
To, to adopt the findings as outlined?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
You have the motion.
Aye, second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, very good. So, we recommend that the city council affirm the environmental assessment, and recommend that the city council approve use permit, UPR 313936, and design review, DR 41813424, subject to the conditions of approval outlined herein.
So moved.
Thank you very much. So, we have, so, we need a motion, and then a roll call.
Yeah. I'm so moved.
So moved. Okay.
Second.
So, roll call, please. Crump?
Aye.
Pacheco?
Aye.
Pro Anu? Aye. Okay. So.
One down.
Pardon me? One down. So, we're good, and we'll pass on to the next one. So, now, we will discuss the second one. It's the general plan amendment, GPA 11913827, zone change, ZC 11913828, use permit, UPR 11913830, major subdivision, Sub 011913832, and design review, DR 011913833. Six townhomes on .14 acres vacant lot. The proposal would amend the general plan designation for the site to residential, medium density, and the zoning to R3, multiple-family residential district. And our staff today would be speaking is Brian Pallant.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners.
Good evening.
The next item before you this evening is the Habitat for Humanity Geneva Townhome, located at 3001 Queen Avenue. The applicant is requesting a general plan amendment from residential medium to low density to residential medium density, and their rezoning from unzoned to R3, which is multiple-family residential. This is in order to allow the construction of six townhouse-style units. Additionally, the applicant is requesting an airspace subdivision for six condominium units and design review approval for the overall building. The subject property is located at the northeast corner of Geneva Avenue and Schwerin Street. The proposed 11,017 square foot, oh, this, sorry, excuse me. Okay, so, this slide shows a existing conditions of the site. As you can see, it's a vacant site. This is looking northeast, from the corner of Schwerin and Geneva. These are the adjacent uses to the east of the, of the project site, two-storied, single-family Behind the project site, we're on Schwerin Street now, looking southeast, and there's a liquor store, which would be the property abutting the subject property to the rear. Now, we're back to where I was. The proposed 11,017 square foot building will contain six townhouse-style units. Each unit will contain three bedrooms, one and a half bathrooms, and a one-car garage with approximately 1,830 square feet of living space. The building itself will be three stories and a setback one foot from Geneva Avenue, from the Geneva Avenue property line, following the predominant setback for the neighborhood. This is a perspective view from Geneva Avenue looking northeast. Here, you see the Geneva Avenue and Schwerin Street elevations. The project features high-quality materials such as lap siding with. with extensive trim around the windows, between floors, and at building corners. Large second-floor windows would be double-hung and accentuated with corbels and trellis structures. All garage doors would be recessed for de-accentuation and embellished visually, also through the use of corbels and overhead trellises at the sidewalk level. Staff has completed an initial study and has determined that the project would not have a significant impact on the environment. Adoption of a negative declaration is therefore an appropriate level of review under the California Environmental Quality Act. Staff finds that the project is compatible with the proposed amended general plan and the zoning regulations of the multiple-family residential district. The design is compatible and complementary to the existing neighborhood. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission forward general plan amendment, zone change, use permit, major subdivision, and design review to the City Council for approval. Do you, do you need me to read the numbers off of each of those?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Sure.
Complete staff's presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. So this is affordable housing, which is great, and it's with Habitat for Humanity.
Correct.
And it would be, would it be, would it be something like, we were talking about this earlier, on El Camino, everyone came in and they built, they helped build their own house and paint?
My understanding is that's part of Habitat for Humanity's-
Well, yeah, that's required.
Yeah, it's part of the requirement for being accepted into the, into the program.
Nice, very good. It, I think it's, looks amazing.
Yeah, I would like it. I'd like to compliment the architect, both for the exterior and particularly the way the interior space is designed. It's great. It's a really well-done job.
And 1,800 square feet's pretty amazing, too, you know, really, truly.
Depends on whether or not you have teenagers.
No, you send them to their room. Yeah. Do you have any questions?
No. I do wish to hear from the people involved. Any questions for them?
You're looking for that?
Yeah.
Nice. May we invite the architect or a planner or who, who would you be, sir?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Peter Dunn. I'm the Vice President of Real Estate Development for Habitat for Humanity Greater San Francisco. As you may know, we're active in San Mateo, San Francisco and Marin Counties for our chapter. Very pleased to be here tonight to answer any questions on this project. We're very excited about the project. It will be 100% affordable project. The, you know, Habitat's mission is to provide high-quality, safe, decent, affordable, and sustainable housing to hard-working clients in San Francisco, Marin, and San Mateo Counties. Since 1989, when Habitat Greater San Francisco combined with Habitat Peninsula and Habitat Marin, we have built over 248 homes. And approximately, if I can do some quick math, 52 of those homes have been in Daly City, including the 7555 Mission Street condo complex. So we're very pleased to be back here again before you with another project. We will act as, we are acting as the developer, obviously, but we will also act as a general contractor for the project, utilizing a mix of, we sort of have three groups of, three groups of workers that we use to build our, this type of a project. The principal group are the homeowners, who are required to provide 500 hours of sweat equity per family. And they can bring their friends and their cousins and aunts and uncles to help them out with those 500 hours. And then we also use, we have two groups of volunteers. We have skilled volunteers that we utilize through AmeriCorps, skilled in the trades. We do supervise with our own staff all the construction. And then we also use unskilled volunteers, people who, you know, like ourselves, that might come out on a Saturday or on a Friday and volunteer our time. So approximately 80% of the work on a project like this will be completed by volunteer labor. What, oftentimes what that means is it takes us a little bit longer to build a house, build a project. But, you know, nothing that should be an issue. So I think we're projecting about 12 to 18, 12 to 18 months on this project to build it. We're, we've already jumped the gun a little bit and started working on our construction documents. So glad to hear you love the building.
It looks very nice.
So we'll be, we're, we're, we're working very hard to get this foundation in before the winter sets in. So late fall start. Hopefully the winter won't be too bad and we'll be able to work through it. But, you know, working with staff's been great, very helpful in moving the project along and we look forward to continuing. I'm here myself. Doug Fowler is our project manager on the job with Habitat. And David Crabbe is the architect. So happy to answer any questions you have.
That's the man whose architecture I like.
Well, first of all, you need to show your pictures because you brought them all the way here. So I know that we saw them up there, but you should just share them. Just, just because you took the time to bring them.
We actually had a professional renderer-
Ah, nice.
Do it, so.
It's beautiful.
It looks better than the rendering idea on the screen there.
What's your favorite part about the house or the building? The houses or the townhouses?
Well, it's Habitat. I mean, I love Habitat. This is the- We love David. This is the one, two, it's the fourth project I've done in Daly City for Habitat.
Yes.
So that's like, this is the, puts it in the neighborhood context.
Yes. Yes. For the neighborhood, I guess, and there's no one here to ask these questions, so I will ask. We will, again, I don't want to assume that you're going to be doing the project within the timeframe that, you know, to keep it eight to five or somehow to keep it so that it's not overextending on time for the neighborhood.
Yeah, so we're, you know, the city obviously has rules and regulations about working hours. I haven't read them personally, so I don't know what exactly they are, but we will adhere to them.
Okay.
I don't know what the rules, I'm not familiar with rules on working on weekends. But we might, you know, there may be times where we'd like to work on a Saturday.
Yeah.
So, but we'll work with staff and the building department and make sure that we're complying with whatever the requirements are.
You obviously are allowed to do it on the weekends because that happened on Mission Street.
Yes.
Often.
Yeah, and I live close by, Mission, I said El Camino, but I live pretty close by and it was never seemed to be a big problem and it, it's a lovely building. The last thing, I guess, was because it's volunteer and such, how much time do you think it's going to take?
Well, we're budgeting on the long end 18 months. So we're hoping, if this was a full-production building being built by a production home builder with, with all general contracting labor, it'd probably be somewhere in the nine to 10 month, 10-month range, I would guess. So, you know, we take a little bit longer than that, but we'll, we'll be diligent and push it forward. We're as anxious to get beds on heads as we, or heads on beds, as we say.
Nice. Do you have any questions?
No.
No.
Thank you for doing this. This is pretty amazing. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here.
I'm just admiring your work, that's all.
It is. I like the color, too. I like the choice. Very nice.
We had no cards, right?
Very nice. Okay.
Then I'll move to close the public hearing.
Thank you, sir. And you would second it?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, very good. So that's closed. Now, we, okay, so the recommendation is that we recommend that the Planning Commission forward to the City Council the following recommendations. Adopt the findings as outlined herein. So I need a motion and a vote?
Aye, yes.
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, we vote yes, okay. Recommend that the City Council affirm the environmental assessment and recommend that the City Council approve the general plan amendment. Here we go. GPA 11913827, Zone Change ZC 11913828, Use Permit UPR 11913830, Major Subdivision Sub 11913832, and Design Review DR 11913833, Subject to the conditions of approval identified herein.
So moved.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I don't think we have to do a roll call.
That wasn't a roll call?
Oh, we needed to do a roll call. Didn't say it.
They left a line out. Somebody didn't approve it.
Okay. Crump?
Aye.
Pacheco?
Aye.
Proanu?
Aye.
Thank you. So there we go on that. Gentlemen, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And lots of luck. We'll see you in the process, I'm sure. Take care. Bye-bye. So now we move to our last and final, number three. The General Plan Amendment, GPA 31913911, Design Review DR 61813530 for four new, single-family homes on property located on the south side of Templeton Avenue. The proposal would amend the general plan designation to residential low density. So now, so now we'd like to open the public hearing and we do have some cards.
We need to hear from Brian.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I just skipped right through you, didn't I?
But you also left his name off the agenda, too.
Would that be Michael?
No, that's me.
Oh, Brian, welcome again.
Thank you.
Would you like to receive, sorry?
All right, the next item is Templeton Homes, which is located at 717 Templeton Avenue.
Okay.
So for a little background, in 1994, a number of properties in the city were rezoned. The subject property was rezoned from multiple-family to single-family. Yet, the general plan designation of open space was not updated at that time. The applicant is requesting a general plan amendment from open space preservation to residential low density in order to allow the construction of four single-family homes. Since the parcels are already zoned, single-family, no rezoning is required. The subject property is located on the south side of Templeton Avenue. And here are some site photos of the site as it exists today. This is looking north? East, okay. And so then west, immediately west of the site are these existing homes. And opposite side of the street are some older, single-family homes. So the, the four lots range in size from approximately 3,200 to 4,500 square feet. Each home will be set back a minimum of 11 feet from the front, meeting the predominant setback of the neighborhood, and five feet from the left-side property lines. The front yards will include a two-car-wide driveway to access the two-car-side-by-side garage and a three-foot pedestrian access to the front entry. The remainder of the front yard area will be landscaped. The first floor plan contains an entry foyer, a bedroom with bathroom, and a two-car-side-by-side garage. As you can see by the slides here, lots one, two, and four are identical. Lot three is very similar, but just slightly modified. And that carries over for the site plan in each, each level of the home. The second floors contain a living room, a powder room, kitchen and dining areas. And the third floor consists of a master bedroom with in-suite bathroom, two additional bedrooms, and a hall bathroom. These are examples of the front elevations. The proposed homes provide a recess at the third floor of the building's front elevation, provide a recessed garage door and a pedestrian entrance. And the architectural material and details are replicated from the front facade onto the visible side walls of the building. The homes provide a combination of stucco and horizontal wood siding altering between the floors, which serves to visually distinguish the pedestrian and main living levels while de-emphasizing the third floor. Staff has completed an initial study and has determined that the project would not have a significant impact on the environment. Adoption of a negative declaration is therefore an appropriate level of review under the California Environmental Quality Act.
Sorry, when I was watching, looking at, it has the front yard. Does it have a backyard?
Yeah, they are-
Because it's on a mountain. That's what I'm saying.
Upsloping lots, so they're, they're going to be, and that should be illustrated in the plans, but they're going to be doing quite a bit of grading and I think putting in some levels and retaining walls. The architect is here and can probably tell you a little bit more about the details of that. So, let's see.
Well, yeah, it has a yard, but a yard.
So it'd be nice to know if they're just going to leave a pack of dirt or if they're going to actually level it off and put a retaining wall because they're on the side of a mountain, right?
I, I believe they are planning on putting retaining walls. I think the civil plans showed some retaining walls, but I would, I would defer to the architect to give the specifics.
Okay, so that's a concern. Because you don't want to have to deal with, I mean, I wouldn't want to have to deal with later the people who purchase, if this goes through, dealing with a-
A wall.
No, a slide.
Yeah.
Oh, we'll give him Brian's home number.
Okay. Staff finds that the proposed use is compatible with the general plan and the zoning regulations of the single-family residential district and that the design is compatible and complementary to the existing neighborhood. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission forward the general plan amendment and design review to the City Council for approval. And this completes staff's presentation and I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay. I just want to double-check what I heard. I understand there's a two-car garage and as well as, because it's recessed in, there's two more cars to fit in the driveways. That's correct.
Correct. And, and four, based on the square footage of each of the homes, four are required and four are what, what are being provided. So two inside in a side-by-side garage, two on the driveway, on the side-by-side driveway. And the driveway meets the minimum 19-foot-in-depth requirement to not block the sidewalk if they use that for parking.
And also, I understood, I'm just double-checking, that's what I heard. As well as having a room enough to have two cars in the driveway, you're also having like a yard, a front yard as well?
Correct.
Before the sidewalk or concurrent? You know what I'm saying?
So they'll, they'll, they'll be, part of the development is they're going to be putting in a sidewalk where there, there isn't one existing now.
Okay.
So then there'll, there will be a two-car-wide driveway that accesses the two-car-wide garage.
Got it.
But the lots are wide enough that there is additional room in the, in the front yard to have a landscaped area and a three-foot paved walkway that goes to the front entry door.
Wow, okay.
And we also, there's also the requirement that they use basically decorative paving for the driveway.
So it looks nice. So another question, and I was looking, kind of trying to figure that out. When-
Want me to go back to the site plan?
Yeah, what I'd like to see is, so if we're looking at the, at the houses, right? And I, okay, there you go. So the problem is, is there's one, one. So for instance, we're on lot three, for instance, where the front door is and there's a window?
Yes.
On the street, technically, that would be a spot where a car could park on the street.
Yes.
Are we correct on that?
Yes, in fact, if you take, the, the site plan actually has so much information on it, it is a little tricky to see.
You're right. You're right.
But I looked at a full-size of this earlier this afternoon.
Yes.
And was actually measuring out the amount of space left for park, for street parking.
Right.
And between the separate curb cuts for the driveways, there's room for at least one, and in some cases, two cars.
For each house?
Between each of the paved, each of the curb cuts.
Okay.
There was between 20 and 40 feet. Like, if you, again, if you look carefully at that, and it's...
It's kind of...
Actually, I don't know if I can tell from here, but there are, there are, there are two of the lots where the driveways are a little bit closer together.
Yeah.
And in that case, there was enough space for one car parking in front. But on the lots where there was a little bit more distance between them, there's enough for two cars.
We're talking two. So that's important for the community, for the neighborhood, so that they have, they still don't lose...
Correct.
Parking. Right? So that's important.
Brian?
Yes.
Clarification. Often before, when I've been on the commission, in a case like this, we did it for the Christopher Columbus School Development. We put in a condition of approval that required the garages be used for parking only, to eliminate storage and other problems. And that is not in the current conditions, is it?
It is, I don't believe it is. Is there a reason why?
No, the zoning ordinance essentially requires that garages be used for parking purposes only.
It does now?
Yes. And this would not have an HOA. It doesn't, the number of units doesn't warrant that. But it is a zoning ordinance.
Yeah, that one in Chris Columbus was an HOA, and that was why it was put, because it went into CC and ours. Thanks, Michael.
We'll have to take a look at the provision of parking on that side of the street. Of course, Templeton's a one-way street in this location.
Right.
Oh, so that's interesting. That's right.
Well, you can see it right there, see?
Right. I guess there's parking on...
No, but as long as it's in the zoning code, it's very important that that garage be used for parking.
Right.
Because that alleviates some of the burden on the neighborhood.
Absolutely.
If you're going to allow the new construction.
Right, I agree. Hundred percent. So I see parking there. So I'm assuming, when you say it's one-way, it's one-way, that means...
It's one-way westbound.
Westbound.
It's one-way, but you still can park on both sides of the street?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Right? I just want to make sure. Some one-ways, it ends up being that it's smaller, and then all of a sudden, there's only parking on one side.
The day we took this photo, there were cars parked on both sides of the street. In fact, we parked on the north side of the street, and there seemed to be ample of room for a car to pass through.
So a question on that, because I saw that happen a few blocks away from my home when they built, I'm trying to remember, is that street wide enough so that later, somebody doesn't come and say, "You can't park here," and it gets painted red? I mean, there's, is it wide enough so that there's parking on both sides of the street?
It seems that it is wide enough. There's existing, cars park on both sides of the street.
Now, I'm just making sure.
To tell you the truth, if you, just around the corner from this, if you're taking Crocker and going up, like up to Village in the Park or Point Pacific, quite honestly, this street probably has more room for traffic to go through than the two-way on Crocker, before, just before you reach Point Pacific. That is dicey there.
This was probably a two-way street at some point, and then was made a one-way to accommodate two parking aisles and a single-traveling.
So that's, I mean, for me personally, I think that my concern is parking, because that's how it is all over the city, so I would assume that the residents are also concerned about it. That's why I was asking.
Sure.
So it's good to know.
Oh, I'm sure we'll hear about parking coming up.
And as the planning commissions may be aware, back in 2014, 15, or actually, excuse me, a little later than that, 2017, the city adopted new parking regulations to base the number of parking spaces on the square, habitable square feet of the home.
Nice.
So that controls the size of the home, and in this case, they're capped at a 2,500 square foot home, providing for parking spaces.
Very good. No, that's good to know. Okay, so if everybody's in agreeance, I will, we have a few people who'd like to speak.
Yes.
Okay, let's do that. I'd like to invite Doris Mansferre. Up to speak, please.
Yes, she is.
Welcome, Doris. Thank you.
So I just put my little bullet points here.
Sure, sure.
So, major concerns is structural damage when this, if it does go through. Our, these homes are old, at least the ones on the side, and we still have plaster. So any movement, crack. Now, I work at Mission Bay, so a lot of construction over there, and that pounding, you can feel it. So I'm concerned about the houses being damaged. And if they are, who's going to fix it, and who's going to pay for it? Now, the other thing is, actually, right where that picture is, but the street itself, there is, like, this kind of hole that's starting to come. It's kind of dipping. So if you do construction there, you're going to end up with a big sinkhole, is my gut feeling. I don't know if any engineers have researched that. Back in the 70s, or felt me guys, the 80s, they could, when they were paving this whole street, they couldn't do that section of the street, because the equipment would not fit. At least, that's what I remember them saying. That's why that was, it wasn't fixed, like, the rest of the streets were fixed around that area.
Hmm.
Right? Does it remember that? Okay. Parking is an issue. Huge issue. I've actually tried to work with the parking division and did some, you know, petitions, and that didn't go anywhere. Because on the other side of the street, where the houses are, there's stairs after, at every house. So you have space for maybe two small cars, one big car, and then you have the people don't care, they just park wherever they want, and they're taking up two spaces. So that's a huge issue. Now, already?
Two minutes. Do you have only one more thing to talk about?
Several. But parking is the main street. The curb's falling apart, you know, the little curb that we have on the other side, all this structure, deconstruction, and all that stuff. So, I mean, anyway, I have more, but my time's up.
I'd pass it on to the next person. Okay, what did I do? There we go. We have two more. Thank you for coming up and speaking. Angela Fucci? Angela?
Yes.
Thank you.
Continue where Doris left off.
Okay.
Parking is a huge issue. Right now, we have people up and down the street that do not use their garages on this side of the street, that housing. A lot of people use their garages, not for parking, but for storage and hoarding.
Pardon me, ma'am. May I ask you, the garages, are you talking about the ones that are down behind?
Those right here, she's showing.
Right here.
These ones.
Right here.
Oh, these are the garages? Okay.
Anyway, I don't know, without wasting my time, we already don't have parking. We're going to lose a substantial amount of parking with this project. Another concern is how, when, if this goes through, how are we supposed to get up the street? Which, right now, if there's parking on both sides of this, people parking on both sides of the street, you have to do a running start from, like, almost two blocks away to make the angle that allows one car through. You know, how are, how are the trucks that are bringing the dirt, or, you know, taking dirt out, and all the construction going on, how are we supposed to access the street? What plans have been made to deal with how this is going to severely impact our lives? Another issue, and I want you, another thing I'm bringing up, it's not an issue, but we petitioned to have this street made into a one-way several years ago, because of the danger level of the fact that it was a two-way street, and people were racing down it. Also, if, in the case, in the event of a fire, a fire truck would be unable to get up the street, as it was safely, when it was a two-way street. How much time do I have left? Is that it?
It's usually two minutes. But again, do you want to have your last point?
No, I interrupted.
Yeah, go ahead, your last point, go ahead.
My, how are, okay, my last point is, how are new tenant, or people who own the house, how are they going to come back into the street? Are they going to be backing up into the street, reversing out, or going, doing a reverse and coming out forward into the street? That's a huge concern for me, because of where this, the street angles at a severe curve as you're going up. You can't, in these pictures, you can't see where that curve is.
And the houses are on the curve, is what you're saying?
Yeah. And these are, like, huge safety issues, also for emergency vehicles coming up the street. That's a huge issue.
So can you see the vehicles coming in? I mean, like, like I say, for example, you're going to back out?
No, I'm wondering how the, these new, the people that are going to be living in these houses, if they...
There's the curve. Wait, on the drawing, Michael? There's a, it said Templeton on the drawing, and it was yellow and red?
The site plan, sorry.
There you go.
Yeah.
So most of the houses are on a flat land, and then there's a couple, 1712 and 706, there look like it's a curve.
Right. So as you're gathering speed, coming up to make this curve, now, you've got cars that are going to be coming out of this, you know, how many people coming out, and now, these cars are coming at a high speed to make that curve. How are we going to mitigate that traffic?
I'm sorry, I don't mean to be rude, but I don't understand why people have to come at a high speed to make that curve. Some cars...
Go to drive it. I mean, you can't, not a high rate of speed, but you have to kind of, you know, accelerate.
Accelerate.
Yeah, I'm sorry, not a high rate of speed.
I was just thinking.
No, because it's actually a low rate. You know, time how you come up that hill because of that strange curve.
And...
Now, you're coming up around that curve, and now you've got people that are going to be coming out of these new houses, and coming right at your rate of speed. What is, how is that being taken into account?
Right, and then...
Let's take a look at the site plan to answer that question.
Yeah, and that's my other, my question ties into, thank you for coming to speak. My quick question would be, how do the other cars on the other side of the street back out and get out into the street? It would be the same, right?
Well, they don't. They have an alley.
They don't have driveways.
No, the driveways are down, down below, on a little non-street street behind the house, those houses.
Oh.
See, they park that way.
They're driveway.
It's quite a slope.
Yeah.
And if you, if you could look over those roofs and look down, you'd see behind them, there's a street that runs through that has angled garages.
And that's theirs.
Like one of them.
It's a piece.
Oh, that's their little, they go back there and they park. Is that where you guys live?
Well, that's, the garages are back there.
Okay, that's where your garage. But it's yours.
Yes.
Yeah, so you guys use those parking for your cars as well? And some people don't? Some people park on the other side and on the street.
And you have to remember, that's probably four flights of stairs from your house. So you generally park on the street when you're carrying in groceries, because it's a steep hill and your garage is, like I say...
Four flights.
Four flights plus some landings and so forth.
Got it.
Get teenagers.
So we use the street as well.
He adopts them, yeah, it's true. I know, I use, I use my grandkids, because, yeah, so I understand. Okay.
I think we have one more.
We have one, yes, sir, we do, thank you. It looks like Tom Lad? Tom?
Tom Reddy, so.
I'm sorry, is that you?
Yes.
Is this card you? Okay, so we had two people who live on, speak, so at this time, can we invite him? Or can we, well, before we invite you, I guess, I'm listening to their questions.
Can we add a speaker?
Pardon me?
Can we add a speaker? Can I add myself now?
Run and get a card.
Sure, grab a card while we talk.
Quickly.
Okay, yeah. So I had just a couple of questions. I understand structural damage questions. I would be concerned myself, if I lived there. I know that when they were building at Duggan's, when they were pounding at Duggan's, they were pounding because they had to place these metal rods down. I don't think you...
With the piles, yeah.
Yeah, you don't need to do that on these housing, do you?
No, this is in pile work.
Okay, that's, that's important. But there is going to be big trucks and all that. What happens if the...
Well, basically, just speaks to that lady's concern about the plaster. If damages like that happen, there will be signs posted, whoever is the general contractor, and this is their liability.
So the general contractor would have to fix the damage?
But without pile work, where she is, there has been pile work over there, which isn't going to happen here.
Right. So there's no, thank you, sir. There's no pile work, that that's important. I think you were, ma'am, you were speaking about that. I totally understand that, because we lived through that, so it was, it was interesting. But you're not going to have that happen in your space, but if there is damage to your homes, because they're older homes, then there's something they can do.
Sure, there could be a remedy through the general contractor.
Okay, very good. So that was, okay. This sinkhole...
There you go.
Or like, a sinkhole? Do you know anything about that?
We didn't observe an active sinkhole that day. That's not to say it doesn't exist, but we didn't notice it the day we visited the site.
Could you, could you check that out for us?
Sure.
Okay, that's important.
Well, I had something to bring up with, with streets.
Right, it's true, the existing condition.
Streets division?
Right, actually.
And, you're right.
It's a concern of streets.
Absolutely. So you would have somebody do that. And, and, and when, when, when they're, all this building done, don't they redo, because you have to tear up the streets to put, to tie into the sewer and all that, right? So doesn't the street get redone anyway?
It depends. If there's a significant amount of lateral work in the street, they might require a new asphaltic layer, that they being the Public Works Department.
Right.
But it's not an absolute sort of thing.
It's not an absolute.
It's usually a rectangular patch.
Yeah, it's usually a patchwork.
Okay, okay. That was my, and then, the dump, what she spoke about, the dump trucks, or the trucks that access the street, and how is that going to impact the people that live in that neighborhood?
So the Public Works Department will come up with a, essentially, a parking management plan for those sorts of vehicles, and, you know, where they're to park, and that, we take a closer look at that as we get closer to construction.
Okay.
It's a valid concern. It's a narrow street.
Okay.
Well, there may be temporary signs posted, no parking during certain times for certain days, so that the trucks have a place to be.
Sure.
This is often done on construction site on narrow streets.
And after initial excavation...
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, you're not going to have those trucks anymore. That's important to understand, is, is the trucks will be there for a certain period of time to take the dirt away and things like that, but they're not going to be there the whole time. I mean, they're not. I mean, that is, that is important. Go ahead. Oh, and dump truck. And what is the safety issue with regards to fire trucks? I mean, it sounded like, we just, we just talked about how wide, because it used to be a two-way street, and it is now a one-way street. So I don't understand why there wouldn't be enough room for...
As a two-way street, it wouldn't accommodate passing...
No.
Right, but right now, it's a one-way street, so...
One car can go up.
And a truck could come and a fire truck. And a truck could come and a fire truck.
A truck has a very difficult time, you can ask the fire department.
But they can come.
They can maybe, if nobody, if everybody parks properly, if somebody sticks out too far, they're going to hit them.
Right.
There's existing development on Templeton Avenue that the fire department continues to serve. So the fire department didn't, you know, raise an issue with this particular development on that topic.
Okay, I'm glad it's only a one-way street then, because if it was, yeah, go ahead.
We had that poor guy Phil have a card, let's hear from him.
Yes, we did. Sir, I can't read your name. Castoro, Mr. Castoro? You're welcome to speak.
Thank you. That blue road up there is a paper road, it doesn't exist at this point, so, but anyway, it's a very steep and curvy road. I think the main concern that Angela and some of us have is particularly during construction, you know? I can't imagine these big dump trucks going on up Templeton and around the one-way. And I'm, I'm curious how the city is going to accommodate that. I mean, that's going to be problematic. You get the UPS and the prime trucks, everybody parking in your street, and you're one-way and there's cars on the street and only one car will fit and barely around that curve at times. So I think that's, a lot of it, our main concern is that during construction, how that's going to be accommodated and how we're going to be able to access that street. It's going to be a problem for a contractor and everybody, I think. So that's the main concern. They're taking all of their water, all of the drainage from the hill, they're collecting it in their backyard, there's some flat areas in the retaining areas and all the roof drains and it's a metal roof, which is interesting. And then it's going to come down and end in a concrete, in a, in a stone splash area in the, in the front yard. And I just, this is only a tentative plan, it's not the construction plans, but how that gets sized and everything and for drainage and what happens when that overflows and if it, if it could, you know? So it's interesting how the, they're taking care of their water.
Well, that'll be definitely a part of the permit process.
Yeah, I mean, it's interesting the way that's being handled. So I think outside of the drainage and the, and the conditions during, it's a very narrow, curvy street. And on the other side, our concern is, there's enough room to park between each house, but there's a red zone where there's a set of steps that go down. It's a very different kind of arrangement, you know? You go down to the sidewalk and then you go up to your house.
Okay.
So those red zones, sometimes, you know, the police have been accommodating and other times they're not. Sometimes people will call for, you know, if somebody parks in front of your, in front of your steps, well, you can't get up to the street. Sometimes we might, you know, ask them for a little leniency during the night, you know, from nine to seven when nobody is using them as much, we might be able to park and block it, a stairway, as long as you're out by a certain time and you don't do it during the middle of the day. The police go, come and look at it all, all week long, you know, people get tickets. Then on the weekends, somebody will park in front of my house for the whole weekend in front of my stairs and I can't get to it. Police never come on the weekends, so we might ask for a little leniency to accommodate the parking because we are losing most of our parking there. Then there's going to be another three houses built. They had a permit in 2008 to build those between the R1 and the 731. They had a permit to build there and the, the housing crash kind of stopped it for a while, but they'll be building there in the short, in their future. And then up the street, there's an empty lot that they're going to be building on, so we'll be losing parking up there too. Parking's a big issue in this area as well as the steepness of the road.
Thank you for coming up and speaking, I appreciate that, appreciate that. So I know this is just, is this, so I just want to double check. There's some concerns that the people have here that I believe are concerns, you know, the, especially, as much as the parking is a concern, I know that it's nice to see that there are, you know, four parking spaces, they're supposed to use them as such, that's, that's great. And then there's some, still going to be some street parking. I guess I'm trying to understand is, more importantly, is how, how the city works with the contractor to make sure that the truck, dump trucks or whatever comes through, at least initially when they're digging it out, it's not going to be a problem for the residents?
Well, the, the public works department will approve a haul route for all a soil offload from the site. And as part of that, they'll take a look at where trucks, we can take a look at where trucks
Please.
would park during that excavation.
And this is why you may end up with your signs or whatever, or they may limit the size of the trucks that can come in and haul away.
Be smaller, yeah.
And be smaller. I mean, some, a number of these issues that involve the construction honestly have their solution once, if we approve it and council approves it, and then it goes to the permitting process and in the permitting process, public works and everybody gets in. And that's when really a lot of these neighborhood concerns are addressed and properly handled.
Yes, the city will ensure when it grants any sort of parking permits for construction that emergency access vehicles can, of course, access Templeton in its full length. So if a fire truck can get through, it shouldn't be an issue for a passenger vehicle.
Sure. So I guess I'm just, if you don't mind, I address, your concerns are valid, but it's, to me, it sounds like they are going to be addressed. If they're, if all this works out and it goes through and all the way through, and if you have concerns, you need to come and, you know, either speak with the gentleman, who would they speak to? How would I say that? If they had a legitimate problem while a project is going on?
Sure, they can always come to planning and discuss that with us and we can, you know, either answer their question or route them to the proper person.
Senator Val.
Yeah, very, yeah, Valment. Yeah, no, I just want to make sure, and we appreciate you coming and speaking and we, you know, we hear what you're saying. At this time, I'd like to invite Tom Lad, sir, and you can introduce yourself and...
Evening, my name is Tom Lad, the architect of the project. To address those concerns, we are doing in two fixtures. So in a way, you know, we would do the rough grading for four lots at the same time, but we remain two, you know, so we can use it for staging. So in a way, you know, that would not, you know, many trucks, you know, parking on the street, you know, waiting to unload and upload. So in a way, you know, that's how, that's how we want to do it also.
Okay.
Now...
I'm sorry, I want to make sure, did you hear that?
You're going to excavate it all at once, so...
No, we, we would do the rough grading for four lots. Rough grade, it doesn't do the whole thing. So basically, we would take our portion, so we can create a staging area. So, so the material can be temporarily put on the other side. So when the truck come, unload and go. So then none of the park there at all.
That's three quarters of the excavation, right?
No, I don't think so, because...
It's going to get a car in there, or a truck in there, it's going to be as consuming a lot, which is fine.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because, you know, it's a free level.
So, so you're going to, you're going to work it so that it will be less of an impact on the community? Very good.
Correct.
Okay, we appreciate that. And then if, would, if, if with construction, the community or the residents have issues with cracking or on their homes, would they just speak with your head contractor or your head contractor there if there's issues?
We'll be talking to the owner also, because in that day, I don't want to hire the general contractor.
Okay.
So we will make sure that communication is everybody understands.
Open communication. Very good, thank you, sir. Okay, do you have any questions?
Do you have anything else you want to tell us?
I believe one of the question regarding the backyard of the third floor, yeah, we do have everything involved, so we do provide a backyard.
A backyard, yes. Yeah, he found the drawing for me and it showed that you did a nice backyard with a retaining wall and such. How high is that mountain? I mean, when you build into it, is there going to be a lot more mountain behind you?
Yes. Actually, if you see the, see the photograph at the back, most of the trees at the back remain. All these trees?
Yes.
Stay.
They're all staying?
Yeah.
Very good.
That's too far away.
That's, okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So our public hearing is closed, we appreciate everybody's time and attention. And so now, before we do a vote though, I just wanted to make sure that, that city planning, and I know you heard everything they spoke about, but that everybody's concerns are heard and that if there's any problems, that they feel comfortable coming to the planning or to someone to discuss their concerns. Okay, good. So before I do that, okay, so we're looking at a recommendation at the planning commission forward to the city council, the following recommendation.